Now six o'clock, I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education work session to order. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move, Justin.
A motion to approve the agenda has been presented by Mr. Justin Kenny and second by Chair Vice Chairwoman Janine Jones. Is that in discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Okay, five zero. Uh, graduations, seven people have graduations, yes, thank you. There are no visitors who would like to address the board tonight. The next item on the agenda is Superintendent's Cabinet update. Ms. Chesser, please introduce your cabinet provider updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Madam Vice Chair, and to our board members and executive cabinet members who are in attendance. Up first tonight, we will have the Office of Leadership and Learning, and Dr. Denise Richardson will present on behalf of Teaching and Learning.
Madam Chair Jackson led, Vice Chair Jones, board members, cabinet members, and our valued community members. I come before you this evening on behalf of the secondary literacy team, and I want to emphasize that the work that I present to you this evening is a collective effort, not just of our curriculum team, but also learning support, EL, and our technology team. Together, we understand the importance of reading intervention, adolescent literacy, and the science of reading. Our goal is to build a strong instructional framework that meets the needs of every learner. I have to share with you an important note from Dr. Gibbons. Recently, she shared with the Leadership and Learning Division that we must ensure that we're responsive to all students, and we believe the action item that we're submitting to you tonight represents a direct reflection of that bold leadership and the vision brought forth by our superintendent. There are two action items included here, designed to replace the existing instructional material for intervention that better serve students and require targeted literacy support. The two proposed items include a six through twelve ELA intervention resource, or six through eight intervention resource, and a six, a nine through twelve intervention resource as well. Each tool is designed to support our core curriculum, ensuring consistency across all of secondary schools, and provide high-quality instructional material to all students. Keep in mind that traditionally, when you hear the term intervention, we usually associate this with deficits and challenges. However, I encourage you that through this work, I want you to embrace that intervention is not just about addressing deficits. When you hear the term this evening and moving forward, I encourage you to consider intervention is about acceleration, enrichment, and ensuring that all students receive targeted support, that they can thrive regardless of where they begin. The tools that we've selected and we're presenting to you this evening create access and opportunity for all learners. Now, last month, our literacy team presented to you their rigorous process. This process started back in October and went through March. A part of that process, the team launched a vendor vetting process inviting submissions from multiple providers. A cross-functional team was formed to evaluate all of the resources submitted. Through that evaluation, we were looking for items that were grounded in science of reading and adolescent literacy. The top vendors were selected and invited to participate and share their resources with us in January. That was followed by an extensive review at the central office, as well as our schools, allowing staff and stakeholders to engage directly with the materials. To deepen our evaluation, the two top vendors submitted videos highlighting the key features of their resource. These videos were shared with our instructional leaders. Throughout the process, the team worked very closely with learning support, EL, and our technologies department to ensure alignment and access for all learners. Analyzing the stakeholder data and committed feedback, we finalized our recommendation and march, grounded in both instructional alignment and community input. At the core of the process, there were key, two key guiding factors. First, how students learn to read was important. Second, strong reading instruction could continue beyond the early grades. Of course, you know, the state currently requires our district to provide evidence-based resources grounded in the science of reading, but the team acknowledged that this extended beyond the primary grades. The team was intentional about examining all of those resources for science of reading and alignment with adolescent literacy. At the same time, we wanted to make sure that resource supported our birth to twelve literacy plan. We believe this approach ensures the resources that were selected were both for, support the core instruction and targeted intervention, creating a unified system for support for all learners. Now, as we moved into that final phase of the process, we narrowed it down to two specific vendors, HMH and Savvas Learning. At this point, we analyzed that feedback, gaining broader insight from our community. We had thirty-five participants to engage in the survey. Forty-six were presented as parents or caregivers. While this resource or this information was insightful, we knew that that did not represent a full voice of our community. So we took a deeper dive into looking at that data again. Note that there was only a six-point difference between the two top vendors. When that deeper dive took place, this was our guiding principle. One, how well did that resource connect to the core curriculum? Two, did the resource provide responsiveness or embedded pieces that connected to the responsiveness for English language learners, students that were above and below grade level, as well as our students with disabilities? And of course, we were looking at the long-term financial impact for the district. The team met with the leaders to unpack those resources again. We went through the videos again, analyzing each component of that specific resource. We knew very well that that team would understand the expectation, and those team members were also will be on the front lines to implement this resource. We held another meeting with our learning support and EL team to make sure that we understood the resource, to make sure that it would support each of those different teams or groups. Now, I knew I would probably be the ones to stand before you this evening. So I scheduled a few one-on-one meetings with the vendor rep, as well as the person that was organizing and designing our professional learning. Here's what I learned based on that experience that I want to share with you this evening. Success Maker Reading, grade six through eight. This resource is designed to support the extended learning time for middle school. That's that first period block at all of our middle schools. The learning experience for this resource begins with a placement assessment that personalizes the specific instruction for that student, and it provides real-time data and skill-based progress tracking. Also, it makes it friendly for an ELA teacher and a non-ELA teacher. This is especially important for middle school, because usually during that ELT block, sometimes there's a non-ELA teacher leading that instructional block. So with that asynchronous instruction, especially with strong training, that teacher could actually go in and lead that experience for that student. And another thing that I appreciate about, and you're going to see me get excited, because I really unpacked this resource, is that a teacher, this resource connects directly to the core resource that you approved last month. That means that if Ms. Chesser is the teacher of record for ELA, and I am the support teacher and my background is science, what I'm doing with that student in that ELT block, she can see it within the platform. And of course, she can track the mastery of standards within the platform, along with me as the intervention teacher, supporting that instruction as well. That is something that we have not had before. That is something that's definitely needed, because it connects the intervention with what's happening in that specific course period. I was excited, you all don't sound excited, but I was excited about that, okay? Here's what I say about it. It creates a tight instructional loop. So there's not a disconnect between what's happening in ELT and what's happening in core instruction. And I know we're all passionate about what monitoring looks like. This is monitoring in real time for us. Now, the I-Lit suite, which is six through twelve, there are three items that are contained in this suite. It's I-Lit forty-five, I-Lit ELL, and I-Lit twenty. Now, this is what I really appreciate as an educator. I-Lit forty-five is designed specifically for those children that are below grade level. I-Lit ELL is designed specifically for those English language learners. And I-Lit twenty is designed for those students that are above or at grade level, providing them an opportunity to experience acceleration. That is a target audience that we have not truly embraced during that ELT block, but this is an opportunity to not only provide support for those children that are below grade level, but to also provide support for those students that are actually above our own grade level. Each learning experience for each of these items began with a personalized learning assessment. So the teacher can, one, in this resource, it mirrors the complexity and the rigor of the course resource. For I-Lit forty-five, wait on this. I-Lit forty-five allows the teacher to pivot from whole group instruction to small group instruction to individual instruction with a single button click. I experienced I-Lit forty-five for myself as a student through my one-on-one sessions with the vendor. I also wanted to experience it as a teacher through that one-on-one experience. When looking at the different components of that resource, it provide those multimodal texts that we had talked about before. It provide various genres of literacy embedded in the resource. Again, if this is the intervention, and this is the experience for students during that specific time block for instruction, and it's connected to the core, again, that brings that tight instructional loop that we're seeking for literacy. I need y'all to get excited about that. Yes, I absolutely love what I saw, and I think that the team did a great job of vetting the resources to narrow what we have or need, not just for the students that are experiencing deficits and challenges, but the all students. Oh. Okay, I'm gonna continue, because y'all know I'm passionate about this stuff. Okay, implementation plan. Because I know what we want to hear is, how will we roll this out? How will we monitor it? How will we support it? What I will say is, the team has already created a draft plan. Even today, I walked in on a meeting where they were meeting with the technology team. The goal is to ensure that all students have access to the resource and all teachers. They've already drafted a plan to start that summer training with teachers. And of course, these teachers will be seen as our early adopters, and they'll be ones that we'll tap for being the lead learners for next year. We're already scheduling training for June for our leaders, and that leader experience will be about monitoring the resource, effective use, and how to provide support. In addition, the secondary literacy team has refined their Focus Walk instrument. That instrument is now grounded in, again, the science of literacy, well, science of reading, adolescent literacy, and the new standards. And with that specific Focus Walk instrument, we're looking at not only the use of the resource, but the impact of the resource in the classroom setting. The goal is to mirror the consistent process that we've used at the elementary level. Again, creating a tight instructional loop for literacy K through twelve. Again, I will emphasize having a resource that is targeting intervention, that is connected to the core, is a powerful framework. It provides sustainable work for years to come around literacy for our district. Again, it provides an opportunity to monitor usage, instructional quality, and student growth across the district. Now that you've gotten excited with me, and I provided you context, I respectfully share our action item on behalf of our superintendent. The action item reads as follows. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education adopt and approve the purchase of Savvas Learning, Success Maker Reading, and the I-Lit suite, totaling eight hundred sixty-four thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty cents. The purchase is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and general counsel. The six-two through twelve Resource Committee, Adoption Committee, comprised of educators from each of the district schools, recommends Savvas Learning, Success Maker Reading, and the I-Lit suite for six through twelve literacy intervention resources. After additional vetting, review of the stakeholder input, and comparing the instructional resources to the literacy components of science of reading and adolescent literacy, along with the new Georgia K-12 English Language Arts Standards, it is recommended to purchase a four-year subscription of Savvas Learning Success Maker Reading, I-Lit forty-five, I-Lit twenty, and I-Lit ELL. Again, the financial impact is eight hundred sixty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty cents. The funding source is EastFloss. And I will share that this vendor has agreed to deferred billing. And the last time I actually gave you a price comparison between the two of the literacy team shared that, comparing the two top vendors, the overall cost for the other resource, which only provided support for the children that were below grade level, was one million, three hundred, eight thousand, seven hundred, thirty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. I truly believe that the resource that we have presenting to you this evening aligns to Georgia's evolving literacy priorities, reinforces instructional vision for our district, and it supports all learners across the spectrum for success in literacy. Thank you for your commitment and partnership, and in pushing us to do that deeper learning with our adults to make sure we present to you a holistic approach to supporting literacy for our district.
Thank you so very much. Are there any questions?
First of all, you provided so much great information, but quick question, I'm a little bit familiar with Savvas. I would like to know, how, did you give us a timeframe for our, how, when would this progress monitoring take place? Having a resource, I would tell you that is invaluable, right? But if we're not monitoring to make sure we're using a resource, and then we're not moving children, children across those groups like we should, then that defeats the purpose, right?
Absolutely.
I most definitely like the fact that you pointed that we, it's not just an intervention, but it's also enrichment. That's powerful and that is important, but how often will it be progress monitored so that those children move across those groups as needed?
Absolutely. So I will say then, of course, you know, research shows that when you're introducing a new resource, you truly see the impact out of the first three years. But that is only going to be beneficial on, determine on what happens that first year. So I will share that after the training occurs, within the summer months, when we start our focus walks in August, we're looking at that usage of that specific resource. Along with that, the resource is also linked in ClassLink. So with ClassLink, I can go to ClassLink Analytics and see the frequency of the use. But again, to give you real time, during August, focus walk. That's where we're pulling that information on how the students are using, teachers are using that information. And in that first year, you're really looking for, are we using it? Are we designing those lessons appropriately? Do you see evidence of the use of that resource being intentional with that lesson plan? So that's another artifact that we're going to use. Not only just seeing the resource present in the classroom, but where is it in that design lesson? And do you see evidence in it in the delivered lesson? Of course, you already know that we'll be working directly with our instructional coaches. With our instructional coaches, the expectation is, is we're going to, and we already have a plan, to train the instructional coaches on how to model the expected instruction in the classroom. And our coaches will be on the front ground, on the ground, just like for elementary, moving that resource along and supporting the teachers. And again, we meet with our instructional coaches at least monthly for that process. Another layer of monitoring and supporting, because that first year is about monitoring and supporting, because you're not going to see full implementation that first year for most of the teachers. But within that first year, we're also working with the leaders on what type of feedback are you providing? How often are you accessing the leader dashboard to see the integration of the resource? And you should really see that monitoring take place, which is more, which is a powerful element between what's happening in intervention and how the teacher is using that data. So when they have those conversations about data, I'm listening for, how did you pull that data from Success Maker? How did you use that data within that core instruction? And that should be happening at the PLC level. It should be happening in that PLC level. I'm not quite sure if I answered your question, but that is definitely that first ninety days, we're focusing on usage of that resource. And then within those ninety days, we'll examine where we are, recalibrate to determine what is our next level of look for with that implementation process.
And Dr. Richardson, thank you. I wanted to ask Dr. Gibbons to chime in too, because I think as we talk about monitoring the work of the school leaders, Dr. Gibbons, if you don't mind coming up and just adding to the process of how our school leaders will monitor the usage, the implementation, and ultimately the impact of this additional resource, please.
Absolutely. Good evening, Vice Chair and Vice, Vice, I'm sorry. Okay, so Dr. Richardson shared with you that we do have a global look when it comes to our focus walks. But with our assistant superintendents who do supervise schools and myself, we will have, I will also have a caseload of schools that I will be supporting next year. And one of the things that we do when we go into the schools is we look at what are we supposed to be implementing from the curriculum aspect, and what does that look like? So we have classroom visits, as Dr. Richardson shared. We also have visits to our PLCs, because what we are looking for is how are we planning? How are we executing? How are we monitoring? And it starts with the planning in the PLCs, and then it transcends to what's happening in the classroom. So when we are going into schools, we are having conversations in our PLCs, and then we take that knowledge that we have in the PLCs, and we do walks with our building leaders and coaches. Then we can then assess our implementation and then provide feedback to our leaders. And then the beauty of it is, is that now with our restructure, we have an opportunity to have the division that supports our schools along with curriculum and instruction, and we are working together, and we can communicate and have the conversations as what are we seeing in schools? What do we need to see in schools? And then how can we work together to ensure that we are getting the return on investment, first of all, and that we are impacting student outcomes?
Wow, thank you.
I got a question. So, well, we purchased this, are we going to start the training this summer?
Yes.
And then you'll implement, now, what, how much are we going to implement the next, this coming school year of this?
We are.
Across the board?
We.
Across the board.
Yes, sir. We are, we are boots on the ground and intervene with our interventions and making those supports. As Dr. Richardson shared, the beauty of this is that it aligns so very succinctly to what we are doing with our core, and that is always very important for us. We want to make sure that whatever it is that we're doing in that tier-one instruction, which is that core, that we are supporting our students as we are enriching for those students who are at grade level and above, and then meeting our subgroup of students such as our SWD population and our English language learners.
Thank you.
Thank you. This was a lot of information. I love the cost savings that was presented. My, my question is the, the cost, the eight hundred sixty-four thousand and the four-year contract. Is there a reason we went with a four-year contract? Is, is that cost-effective or, and is that eight hundred sixty-four thousand for the whole total for years, or is that for each year?
That amount is for the four years. And again, for this specific resource, that's the max number of years that we secure the resource.
One for Mr. Kenny, you have any questions?
And I will add that I negotiated a discount to get us down to the.
Well, hallelujah.
She's our negotiator.
Mr. Kenny?
So it's not really a question, more of a comment, and I have no problem with the resource. You did a fantastic presentation. But I believe that if we make teachers' lives easier, that we, we impact the, the student success as well. One concern that I heard was that when we order programs like Savvas, the learning platform that the students use is Canvas, correct? And when they, when teachers are making lesson plans through the resources such as Savvas, that the expectation is that they can be integrated in Canvas so that the student doesn't have to leave the Canvas platform to go to ClassLink to then get to the new resource, that everything could be integrated in Canvas, but that's not happening right now. So I don't, Dr. Gibbons, I don't know if that's something that you could comment on, Dr. Richardson, or if y'all just take it.
I'm loving the collaboration. That's what I'm talking about.
Thank you. And what I will say, Mr. Kenny, as Mr. Rogan comes up, our newly appointed chief of techno, soon-to-be chief of technology, that that is part of the process as they engage in the adoption process, that the technology team, they do serve on the committee to look at that compatibility and the way that things can be integrated together. So I know Mr. Rogan will talk about that.
Yeah, so the way Savvas works is if we were to look at, to do an integration with Canvas, it would not be in ClassLink, but then we also can preassign and pre-license all of the different resources to students in classes. So it would be up to the teacher to do each of those individual ones along with, excuse me, to follow the guidance from curriculum along that process. And so in the past, when we've done that, sometimes resources go unlicensed, unused, or misaligned, because they're not assigned appropriately according to that, as opposed to the way we do it, which is Denise's team gives us course numbers that get aligned to each of those resources. We have, each of those call, have a resource ID, and we align those to make sure that that course number gets that resource ID before that teacher and student ever log in. And that's why it's like that. Thank you so very much.
Thank you all so very much, and I'm going to say I have enjoyed the presentation and the fact that you say all students, all students. It's just, it's saving us money. So we appreciate all the collaboration and just thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Dr. Smith Dixon?
So good evening. I will see if I can match Dr. Richardson's energy. Probably not. Awesome. And so first, I want to recognize that this is the month of May, and it is Better Hearing and Speech Month. And so it fits right in with the fiscal ask on tonight. And so tonight, I will be bringing several action items to you on behalf of Dr. Tyra Simon and the Learning Support Department. And so to frame kind of why the ask is here, there is a national shortage for speech-language pathologists, and so that is our reality. For our proposed plan for the FY twenty-six school year, we're proposing for staffing purposes to staff with fifteen speech-language pathologists who will either come from Emerges or Stepin Stones Group or a combination of the two. We're excited that we continue and we'll have four direct hires. So I will say the end goal is we want to have direct hires as much as possible. But the reality of it is, in many instances, the best we can do sometimes is the contract work. And then we do have four independent contractors who have a tenure and history with us here in Rockdale. And so if you are wondering, we're planning to serve for speech services one thousand, three hundred and forty-six students. That number will continue to grow, because speech is a very popular area that many of our students receive services in that area. So it is possible for a student to have a speech disability as the primary area of disability or a secondary area. So that's just helpful to know. And then if you are wondering, the average speech-language pathologist has a caseload of about fifty students. And so that's kind of where that is. And so this is what the broad ask will look like, totaling that over two million dollars. And so you see the combination of independent contractors, as well as the Emerges Group and the Stepin Stones Group. So before I get to the ask, I would like to clarify that the combination of Emerges and Stepin Stones would not be, would not exceed, would not exceed greater than fifteen speech-language pathologists. And so I think we've learned from April, who has become the guru in this particular area as we navigated the school psychologists, that it is far better for us to bring more contractors to you, even if we don't need to use it. So we are a little reluctant to only bring one contractor and recognize that even our contractors have the same issues retaining speech-language pathologists. So if we don't need both, we won't use both, but we will not exceed the fifteen SLPs. So if we don't need both, we won't use both, but we will not exceed the fifteen SLPs. And so the specific ask for tonight would be, the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the contract for an independent contractor, Doretha Glenn, to provide speech services as outlined in the Individualized Education Program for students with disabilities totaling one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. The rationale is that Doretha Glenn is a private provider for speech and language pathology. The provider is necessary to ensure that each student with an identified speech disability receives a free, appropriate public education. And you may hear us refer to this as FAP. The financial impact will be one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars of general funds. The second action item is for Speak Vision LLC. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the contract for an independent contractor, Speak Vision LLC, to provide speech services as outlined in the Individualized Education Programs for students with disabilities totaling one hundred six thousand dollars, one hundred and six thousand four hundred dollars. Speak Vision is a private provider for speech language pathology. The provider is necessary to ensure that each student with an identified speech disability receives FAP. The financial impact will be one hundred six thousand four hundred dollars to general funds. The next one is for Metro Speech Works. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the contract for a private provider, Metro Speech Works LLC, to provide speech services as outlined in the Individualized Education Programs for students with disabilities totaling one hundred and six thousand four hundred dollars. Metro Speech, Speech Works is a private provider for speech language pathology. The provider is necessary to ensure that each student with an identified speech disability receives a free, appropriate public education. The financial impact will be one hundred six thousand four hundred dollars to general funds. The next one is TW Bell Speech Therapy LLC. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the contract for an independent contractor, TW Bell Speech Therapy LLC, to provide speech language services as outlined in the Individualized Education Program for students with disabilities totaling one hundred and nine thousand four hundred and forty dollars. TW Bell's Speech Therapy LLC is a private provider for speech and language pathology. The provider is necessary to ensure that each student with an identified speech disability receives a free, appropriate public education. The financial impact is one hundred and nine thousand four hundred and forty dollars to general funds. The next one is for Emerges Healthcare Staffing. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the contract with Emerges Healthcare Staffing to provide professional services totaling one million eight hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred dollars, which will provide fifteen speech and language pathologists and one sign language interpreter. Emerges Healthcare Staffing is a private provider for special education and related services. Rockdale County Public Schools will purchase professional services as needed and in accordance with the services that are outlined in the students' IEPs. The one million eight hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred dollars financial impact will be general funds. The last action item for tonight is the Steppenstone's Group. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the contract with the Steppenstone's Group to purchase professional services totaling one million seven hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. Excuse me. The Steppenstone's Group is a private provider for special education and related services. Rockdale County Public Schools will purchase professional services as needed in accordance with the services that are outlined in the students' IEPs. The financial impact for this will be one million seven hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars of general funds. The purchase of these fifteen SLPs and one interpreter will supplement the Emerges contract, but not necessarily be in addition to. Any questions?
Oh, hold on.
I have a question, just a comment for any students of Rockdale County Public Schools that have not figured out a career path yet, Dr. Smith Dixon. And April Fallon have come before us numerous times begging us for money to hire speech language pathologists. Go study speech pathology and come back to Rockdale County and work, please.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, thank you for your presentation.
I have one more.
Yeah, one more?
Thankful to Mrs. Chesser for giving me this opportunity to.
Chairwoman, I have one quick question. Sorry. With the sign language interpreter, is this the first time that we've had a sign language interpreter?
No.
Okay.
And we will actually, we're forecasting for two. We are planning to do one as a direct hire and then one through the contract process.
How many students do we have that need sign?
Um, I don't have the exact count on me, but I can follow up.
Please.
I can. All right. So the next presentation for this evening will be the Georgia School Star Climate Rating. All right. So if climate was a slogan, what would it be? And so this is really a broad level question that we think of when we are talking about school climate. So when you're thinking about climate, and you'll see this again, we're really talking about the quality and the character of what it means to do school life in that building. And so school climate in the state of Georgia, there's actually a rating system that you've been made aware of. And with that rating system, a school can get one star, two stars, three stars, four stars, or five stars. And so based on the number of stars, if you get a rating of one star, then it is considered a low rating. If you get a rating of five stars, it is considered a high rating. And if you get a rating of three or more, it's considered a medium rating, which is still a very positive rating. And so if you're looking at this particular graphic, what it shows is there is a direct correlation between the total number of points or the score for that particular school and how it correlates to the number of stars. It is not apples to apples considering elementary and middle and high. So it's possible, if you're looking at five scores, five stars at the elementary level, it would have to be greater than or equal to that ninety-six. But if you're at the middle high level, it's going to be a lower score. So it's not exactly apples to apples when you're going across grade level. So this is just to show that Georgia has had a longstanding commitment to the star rating. The reason why the Georgia Department of Education has implemented this particular process is because it is embedded in state law. And it really, in 2018, was an opportunity for Georgia, as many other states across this country, to address kind of the increase of risk and different things that were happening, such as the massive school shooting that took place in Florida during that particular time. The most important thing to point out here is the point of this climate rating is to show that it is, it is a diagnostic tool to improve schools. So if I were a building level principal, using this information is as important as the academic information that I received for CCRPI. And it is actually a part of that metric. Many of the same components or information are also included there as well. And so what should you know about the star rating? First, this is our very first year kind of resuming the practice for the star rating. So it has been in place for a number of years, and I'm sure you've guessed by now, the reason for the pause was the pandemic. And so we are resuming. The actual calculation for the 2024 star rating is the same calculation for the 2019 star rating. So that is very important to know. As you hear, maybe a similar presentation on next year, be prepared that the star rating will look very different. So you've already known, for example, if we are looking at the components that contribute to the star rating, we have the Georgia Student Health Survey. Well, this year was our very first implementation of moving away from the old traditional Georgia Student Health Survey to the school climate survey. And so the biggest point of emphasis there is, again, is all about how to use this as a diagnostic tool for continuous improvement, but more importantly, how to improve what's happening in that school building. And so on that new climate survey, as you get that information and as it is shared publicly, you'll see the difference with knowing, for example, how kids feel safe about being, not necessarily outside of my school building, but with the factors that I can control. So those things are very important. You also see other variables such as discipline, attendance, not just attendance for students, attendance for staff, attendance for teachers that impact that climate rating. And you also see safe and substance-free learning environment. So I believe the really huge message that this should send is the climate rating is a very robust metric. And so when we're thinking about all the components that they have considered, all of those things are in there. And so for our schools, all of Rockdale County Public Schools received either three stars or four stars, which is very positive if you're thinking about the quality and the character of doing life in our school buildings. If you're looking at that table, you're going to see the overall mean score. So for example, as a district, our star rating score average would be eighty-eight point eight. If you're looking at elementary schools, it's ninety-two point five. So yes, the elementary schools are slightly higher than your middle and high, but the metrics and that factor into middle and high versus elementary are, can be very different. And so what can I do with this particular information? The state makes it very easy for all of us to have public access to a dashboard. Through checking this past week, the dashboard has not been updated. But when it is updated, you will be able to use this link. You can go to that dashboard. It is probably going to populate 2024 beyond 2019. It's really a cool tool in that you will also be able to look and compare Rockdale to other districts. You can compare schools to neighboring schools as well. If you are interested in the calculation, you can always use that click here button and you will see a thirteen-minute video from the Georgia Department of Education unpacking with more information about exactly how that calculation has been done. And then the most critical part is just continuing with the partnership of fostering that homeschool partnerships because all of that gets measured in that particular tool as well. Are there any questions?
Dr. Smith Dixon, will you just please clarify, these ratings, we just received the ratings, but these ratings are all reflective of last school year. So clarify that for our board, please.
Absolutely. So we just received them, but these are our 2024 ratings. And so when you get this information, again, it will be based on what is happening this particular school year. So this school year was the first new year of implementing the climate rating survey. And so next year in 26, you'll get the 2025 ratings.
Thank you. Any questions? Well, thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Smith Dixon. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Board Chair Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, Superintendent, Ms. Chesser, board members, cabinet, and guests. Tonight I'll be bringing the preliminary financial report for the month of April. Our revenues are ten point nine million for April and one hundred and ninety-seven point six year-to-date, representing ninety point five percent of our budget. Last year, this April was eleven point three million. The year-to-date was one hundred and eighty point two, representing ninety point one percent of our budget. Expenditures for the month are eighteen million. The year-to-date, we were at one hundred and eighty point three million, representing eighty-one point three percent of our budget. Last year this time, we were, for the month, we were at seventeen point one million. And year-to-date, we were at one hundred and seventy-three point nine million, representing eighty-four point eight percent of our budget. Incumbrances are one million seventy-seven thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. Our fund balance for the month is forty-five million seven hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Compared to last year, this time, we were at forty-two million six hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars. Excuse me. On our balance sheet, we have assets of fifty-two million four hundred and seventy-eight thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars. We have liabilities of six million seven hundred and seven thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And our fund balance is forty-five million seven hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Just to talk a little bit about our FY twenty-six tentative budget. Y'all have probably seen these numbers several times now. But our estimated revenues are at two hundred and twenty-seven million one hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Our expenditures are slightly higher at two hundred and thirty-one million five hundred twenty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. And we're projecting to take four point, almost four point four million dollars from our fund balance in the twenty-six year. This is an increase of four point three percent. The expenditure budget is four point three percent increase over the FY twenty-five year. Some of the highlights are a step increase for all of our staff members, stipends for our special ed teachers, and an increase to the athletic supplements for our head coaches at the middle school and the high school level. Like Dr. Richardson said, get excited. And so tonight I bring the action item for the FY twenty-six tentative budget. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education adopt the FY twenty-six tentative budget as presented. State board policy requires that the board adopt an annual budget. Adoption of the tentative budget is necessary so that public hearings may be held before the final budget adoption, which will be presented, which will be recommended in June. Approval of the tentative budget allows the superintendent to move forward with advertising the budget prior to adoption. Concludes my presentation. Any questions?
And Ms. Smith, before you leave, I just want to take just a minute to first, thank you for leading this year's budget process. I know it has been a very good process, but a very thorough process, beginning back in the first semester of the school year when we embarked upon that zero-based budgeting process. And Board, I know you have been actively involved in it too, but since we are having this in our public meeting, I just want to really underscore the work that's taken place, not just by Ms. Smith and her team, but certainly the executive cabinet and all of our school teams, including our school councils and the stakeholders who provided input regarding the development of this year's budget. So Ms. Smith did highlight those. I do want to take a minute to go back and reemphasize some of those things because I believe it's important for our employees and our staff to know that there is a step increase built in for all employees going to next year in this tentative budget. We also have a stipend for our hard-to-fill special education teachers. We know that there is a desperate need. I see one of our special education teachers in, in attendance today. And we want, want them to know that we understand the unique needs that they have in supporting our children in the special education classrooms. We spent a lot of time talking with our athletic director. I actually met, Mr. Budenseek and I met with athletic directors from our middle schools and high schools to continue that conversation regarding athletics and some of the needs. And we know that in order to build teams, we have to have strong coaches in place. And so our FY twenty-six budget doesn't include increases in athletic supplements for all of our head coaches. And so we want them to know that we value the work that they do. And one of the other things that's not actually on this slide that I do want to point out is that we are maintaining that two percent alternative retirement contribution. So as those of us who are getting closer to that retirement age, we understand the importance of having and building that retirement nest egg. And so we want our employees to know that that is factored in as well. So Board, again, thank you for working with us as we built this. We want our public to know that we really understand the austerity, austerity times that we're in. We wanted to make sure that we have a very conservative budget, but a sound budget. I know, Ms. Smith, you didn't quite mention in this setting, but in our finance committee meetings, you know, we spent a lot of time as we embarked upon this budget process looking at ways that we could reduce in several areas. We've reduced at the central office, and I want our public to know that too. We have reduced the numbers of positions at the central office. We did take some time to look at the school levels as well to make sure that there weren't some redundant positions in order for us to reduce at the, at the school side as well. But all employees maintain their jobs. We did reassign individuals to other positions or we filled those through, through attrition. So we were able to bring the overhead personnel costs down by well over five million dollars. And so we did not just go into building this budget without really making sure that in places where that in places where we could reduce, that we actually did that. The other place that I'll point out too is through the department budgets. You know, all of our department heads, all of our chiefs went through and really, again, looked at what we were using, ways that we could reduce, where we can conserve some dollars, where, places where we were purchasing things that maybe we weren't getting the best impact. And so in almost all, not all, but almost all of our budgets, we were able to reduce and bring down those totals too. So I'm proud of the budget, the tentative budget that's being presented tonight. Again, I'm proud of the work that Mrs. Smith has spearheaded, because I do think that this is showing our good faith effort to make sure that we have a true budget that meets the needs of our students and our employees, but at the same time is protective of our stakeholders and their tax dollars as well. So, thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll continue, Board, with just a couple of items. We heard Dr. Smith Dixon talk about Better Health and Speech Month, so we do want to publicly acknowledge our SLPs. I know we have a lot of contract SLPs, but for our employees, our direct hires, we do thank them for the work that they do. They support the communication needs in all of our classrooms, and they advocate for language accessibility for our students with disabilities. But Board, it's also Teacher Appreciation Week, and we know we can't do the work that we do here in our school district without all of our teachers. And so we want to both acknowledge and thank them for the ways that they empower our students, how they foster that creativity and really work to create brighter futures for our students. We know that they truly have an impact in everything, in every day, in every classroom. So again, we celebrate them and their hard work. We talked a little bit about the budget, so I won't belabor that point. So you have that action item momentarily. But also, Board, I want to thank you for the workshop that we just completed a few minutes ago. It gave us as a governance team a chance to talk about the accreditation process that is slated to take place for us in Rockdale County during the second quarter of next school year. And second quarter for us, Board, will be between that October through December timeframe. And so we are working to begin that review process, but more importantly, from the review process, that improvement process. So you heard Mrs. Gillis outline what that work entails. You actually heard from Dr. Harrison and Dr. Klein about that accreditation process. And so we are working hard on that, and I thank you for engaging with us today. It has definitely been a busy week, as I know you all know, because you have joined me as we've attended many of the senior awards nights. I know last night, all of us were at Heritage High School. Tomorrow night is Magnet School, but we have, I know I have definitely enjoyed watching all of our seniors walk away with some of the honors and accolades that they have had. So I'm thankful to our school teams for coordinating that for them. It's also been decision days in all of our schools. I actually went back to Heritage High School today. Well, that's a different day. Decision day in terms of the colleges. I visited some decision days earlier in the week at our high schools, but today was signing day, so I don't want to confuse the two, where I was able to see several student athletes sign indicating where they were going to go in terms of sports. I saw football, baseball, tennis. So I was thrilled to see, and even track. There was a young lady today that signed for track. But it wasn't just signing day for sports. Earlier in the week, we went to RCA and we saw educator signing day. And I think that truly warmed my heart, because we saw some young men and women commit to going into education, because we talk about the shortage, Mr. Kenny, but to see some of our kids say that they're going into education with the intent of coming back and working in the classroom. So I was trying to recruit Ms. Stevens and asked them. Ms. Stevens was there to say, okay, why don't you get that degree, come back and work in Rockdale? But again, it was, it's another exciting day, just not only for the sports, but on that side. And lastly, I'd like to ask Ms. Cindy Ball to come up. She has just one quick other, another announcement to kind of wrap up the remarks for tonight.
Ms. Chesser, and good evening, Chair, Board Chair Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, and board members and our guests. And I just want to remind you, because I touched on this a little and you probably have seen the email, and I have given you each a flyer. But on Monday night, we are going to have a collaborative community forum. And this was born out of the collaborative meeting we had, safety meeting, with the Conyers Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Levitt, and also Piedmont Rockdale and some other support groups that were at a meeting that said, you know, what can we do right now before school lets out to really give our parents and in our community some tools and some prevention tools and some supports with regard to drug prevention and support? So one of the things that came out is the community forum that we're having on Monday night. It will be at Rockdale Career Academy. And you can see on the flyer, we have, our main speaker is Wanda Wiggins from the DEA, the Drug Enforcement Agency. She is going to be doing a presentation called Hidden in Plain Sight. And this is really designed to give our parents the tools to identify how and where their children are hiding drugs and other things, vapes, you name it, in their bedrooms. So this presentation is about a thirty-minute presentation, and it's set up on a stage like a bedroom, and things you wouldn't even think of that she'll go through in her presentation. So we're excited to have her. We do have Terri Moore, who is with the Decatur Prevention Initiative, now proudly serving Rockdale. She is one that we contract with to do drug prevention services in our schools. She will be talking about the seven, the seven strategies for community-level change. And then we have two physicians coming from Piedmont Rockdale Hospital. Dr. Sutton is the ER Medical Director, and he's going to primarily speak about symptoms to look for in emergency or crisis situations. And then Dr. George will speak, he's primary care. He will speak more on the chronic symptoms of a chronic drug user, some things to look for. And then, of course, we have our Chief of Police, Chief Freeman, and our Sheriff, Eric Levitt, who are going to join us and talk to us a little bit more about some of the things they're doing in the community to combat drug use and also some of the things that they're doing to prevent underage sales of some of these items to, you know, to our young people. So it is hopefully just the start of a community conversation that will be ongoing. Again, we wanted this one to be a little bit more for our parents, to give them some tools and caregivers, not just parents. Parents and our caregivers really to give them tools to have as our students are let out for the summer. So in the future, we may have it a little bit more open and a little more dialogue. But for this one, again, we wanted to try to make sure we give our parents and guardians some tools. We hope you can be there with us.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. Madam Chair, that concludes my remarks.
Well, thank you, Ms. Chesser. And just let me let you know, it's also Nurses Appreciation Week. So you do have nurses in your school, so be sure to thank the nurses.
Well, let me do that right now, Mrs. Jackson Lett. Happy Nurses Appreciation Week as well. We know how much we depend on our school nurses. And I know, Mrs. Jackson Lett, as a retired nurse, you know the importance of our nurses. And so we do appreciate them as well. So thank you for the reminder.
You're so very welcome, but I'm semi-retired. I'm speaking for the board. We do not need a five-minute recess break, do we? Thank you very much. So we're going to keep it moving. The cabinet has provided numerous presentation on the information. I would like to ask the board members to please review the information. Please review the April twenty-twenty-five board minutes and provide any edits to Ingrid. We will vote on amendments at the regular session. There is no old business. There is no new business, okay? The cabinets have provided an overview of the action items for the board to vote on next week. Is there a motion for the action item to be placed on the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we place items one through ten on the consent agenda items for next board meeting.
Okay. A motion to consider the action item on the consent agenda at the regular session has been made by Ms. Akita Palmer and second by Ms. Janie Jones. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would request that position two be removed, only because I think the vote on the tentative budget should be its, should be its own item for next week. So I'd request items one, three through ten be placed on the consent agenda and a separate vote for item two.
Okay. Mr. Justin Kenny has made a motion to consider action item number two on the new business. Can I get a second?
Point of order, it doesn't require a second. If one member requests that it be removed from the consent agenda, I believe it should be removed.
All right. I'll just read the paperwork. Thank you very much. Do I hear motion to go into the executive session to discuss personnel? Oh, we got a vote. Let me bag up. Okay, there has been a motion to consider H two on the new business and action item and the new business discussion agenda at regular session. Can I get a motion? We got a vote on that. Now I need a motion.
So moved, Justin.
Can I get a second? It has been motion and second that we have everything one and then three through ten on a consent agenda and put in number two on the new business discussion agenda at the regular session. Is there any discussion? All in favor. A five-zero vote. Do I hear motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel? A motion to go in executive session to discuss personnel has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Ms. Akita Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor. Any opposed? Five-zero. The time is noon. Okay, let's go to the executive session. It's just one item, right? Now we're going to zoom in here, sister, just a little bit of a...
Yes.
So at the last meeting, y'all, after you came out of executive session with personnel, you made eight motions in four minutes. Is that a record?
Just wish to be...
Is it gas stop?
It's a record. We're going to try a break.
I'm about to go see my child. I haven't seen in a year.
Military. Military.
Do you need me? What do you need? You sure?
You're...
Sir, can we have somebody from our team on the office? Help me.
From Michael, come here.
I'm ready. I'm just sitting here, I'm not going to turn off.